I'll order this council meeting, June 12, 2023, presentation by Michael Reuter.
Good afternoon, everyone. See some familiar faces and some new faces. Just to give you a little background on myself, I helped the county with the fiscal planning of the county. And I've been doing it for a number of years, and I appreciate the work and look forward to working with you in the future. So this afternoon, I have a draft fiscal plan. It's just kind of a pre look at what the budget might look like as we go into the budget season. And for those that are that are new, we will be holding a public hearing in the fall and a final adoption. So this by no means requires any action this evening. This is purely just for information. And it will it will be revised again as we go through the summer. Our budget process is built off of everything as of June 30th this year. And it will be at that point that we'll receive all the departmental budgets in just whatever form they come in. I'll be revising the revenue estimates on the miscellaneous revenues. And then also dialing in property tax and some local option income tax data as it becomes available through the summer. So this is just kind of a precursor to what what we're looking at for the fall. And for the most part, it's it's all really pretty good news, the revenues and how they're coming in. So this fiscal plan for the members that have been on the council has been updated to include all the 2022 actual data. You know, the revenues and expenditures for the calendar year. It includes the certified budget plus any additional appropriations that you've done to date. I don't have any speculation of additional appropriations in here, but what has been approved to date has been accounted for. And I've also now added the year 2026 into the forecast. There were some legislative changes that that are going to impact the fiscal plan. Although I would I would say considering how much conversation there was about property tax early in the session, especially on the House side. Not a lot of it ended up being significantly impacting what's happening in Johnson County. And I'll focus on that a little bit later as we go through the fiscal plan. So I'm going to start, if you're wanting to follow along electronically or with a hard copy, I'm going to start on page 25. And if I refer to the page number, it's the page number in the bottom left corner, not necessarily the PDF number. You'd always add a couple of pages for the cover and the contents. But I'm gonna start on page 25. And for for some of you, you've heard me talk about this a number of times in the past. This is what's called the six year non farm personal income factor. And it's a factor that it's a statewide factor. It's not unique to Johnson County. And it doesn't matter where you live in the state of Indiana. This is the beginning point for calculating the next year's property taxes and what will be allowed for operating for the for the essentially the general fund. And so we don't have, this is not certified yet for 2020 24's budget. We will know that number by June 30th. That's when the DLGF is required to certify it. Right now, I have an estimate in here for that. But that calculation has also been amended for the first time in several years. You might recall last year when I appeared before before you for the adoption that there was concern about the property tax bills and the implications of the higher assessments that were going to take place this spring. So the legislators did take some action to try and mitigate not 2023's impact, but the potential impact of 2024. And one of the steps they took was to calculate the six year non farm personal income factor, but then apply 80% to that. And so it's the same steps, but they've added an extra step for the next two years. And so they are trying, they were trying to limit how much units could collect for property tax in 2024. Now, in your case, you're growing fast enough that you qualify for what's called the growth appeal. If you would go to page 24. This is historical information on the assessed valuation for the county. And the most notable, which was was a substantial increase, was the year 2023. And your county AV increased 20.58%. That that is even higher than the average. Even even to reference Hamilton County, they were around 17, 18%. So you were actually, you actually grew faster than some of the other counties surrounding counties. And you could go back another year, 9.64 and 7.3. And then you go back a couple of years for that, you see we're in between that four and 5% range. The pandemic produced some interesting results. Who would have ever thought that property values would increase like they did? But they have. We are anticipating more growth. Now, I would say my 13% might be aggressive. We did see some larger notices go out again this year, but not as high as last year. So that might be a little aggressive because what's also happened is the state increased the supplemental homestead deduction from 35% to 40%. Now, to be real frank, that'll help a some, but it won't help a lot only because many people in the municipalities hit the circuit breaker. And if you're hitting the circuit breaker, an additional deduction doesn't do you any good because you're still subject to the 1% cap. But it will affect the county's net AV. And so but then those that aren't at the cap will will see some benefit from from that additional supplemental homestead deduction. I just put 13% in to kind of give you a feel later as we talk about tax rates, what kind of revenue that might produce for a debt. I would say this is this is probably on the high side. And and the appeal, the growth appeal that I referenced will play into that.
Mike, before you go on, how do we apply for that growth appeal?
That's something that we do during the budget time.
Okay.
Last year, just I'll show you what we qualified for last year in a moment, but we have to do that by October 19. And so that will be action that you'll be asked to take probably during the public hearing so that we could go ahead and get it on file. So the interesting thing, though, to me is you you will qualify for this appeal because if you look under 2024 column, at the very bottom line, you'll see the three year average growth factor. You your factor is calculating 1.125. In other words, 12 and a half percent is your average growth over that three year period. Last year, when we appealed, you were at 1.0712. And we appealed that amount against the six year non farm personal income factor, which was 5%. Okay, so we qualified, there was a gap there that we qualified for, and it ends up being about $388,000. But your percentage has gone up. And the question that we all have yet, and and we don't have all the guidance from the DLGF on this yet, is will we qualify now to appeal the 12 and a half percent against the 3.9% that is calculated with the 80% reduction? Or will the DLGF insert some kind of limitation to that? Because obviously, the legislature didn't didn't touch the appeal language, but they touched the calculus, the first step. And most units of government, and when I say most, I would say probably 90% of the units in the state are going to get 3.9%. Will they allow your levy to go up 12 and a half? You qualify for it. I mean, that's we qualified for the full amount and we're granted the full amount last year. And I'll show you that. We're gonna go to page. And we're gonna go to page 26. And so last year, we qualified based on those two differences. Okay, remember saying the 1.07? We qualified for 388,000. Now, I had requested that you adopt a higher amount to make sure we qualified for everything. They reduced us back down to the number I thought we'd get. But we we were reduced, I believe it was 450,000 that we appealed last year, but we qualified for 388. Well, this year, you can see the difference between that 12 and a half and that 3.9% is producing 1,684. And so that's a much larger number than the year before. And that's where my concern comes in, is the DLGF has discretion to approve or deny appeals. Will they take more of a traditional approach and approve something similar to last year? Or will they allow that full levy growth to go through? Again, you qualify for it and you should get it. You've got, I'm sure, plenty of projects to use it on. But that is a question mark that I hope to know the answer to. I've been in communication with the DLGF, but their official positions are going to come out. DLGF is Department Local Government Finance. They are to come out with their direction in June 21st. So we have some new data that's going to be coming out shortly. But it'll be interesting to see how they treat this. And so I'm a bit anxious now. I've built it in here because you qualify for it. But maybe when I come back in the fall, I might have a different response to you, depending if they try to impose some limitation of that. So this year's budget might look a little different than what we've done in the past. I might actually be bringing to you a recommendation that would say, hey, let's build a budget and balance a budget with a typical appeal of $400,000. But then have a but it's another budget if you qualify for the full amount that you could then go that you have, you know, some ability to add that back. So we might have to position ourselves a little bit differently. I felt pretty confident last year going into the growth appeal for you that we would qualify. I'm not feeling so confident just because of how this is playing out this year. So that that is something. So when you're looking, when I go, when I show you the general fund here a little bit, and we get go through all these steps to you, like, what's this all mean? You'll see that we look pretty good in the general fund and probably better than we would typically in a normal year. So you have to be growing 1.0804 plus 2%. Okay, so you could, this is what makes me anxious is so to qualify for the appeal, you're you're growing at 1.125. To qualify for the appeal, you have to be growing 1.104. Well, if you're if your calculation is 1.11, you're still growing faster than that factor, but you don't qualify for it, and you only get 3.9%. But you're over that and you would qualify for a large number. And so it's, I just don't know. It's just questionable to me to see how that's going to play out. So that's that's something I will hopefully have pinned down when we get back together this fall. So page 40, that's property tax. So that property tax is calculated based on your prior year property tax levy amount, and you get an adjustment for that. So page 40 is what's called local option income tax. This is only the expenditure share. This is what goes to your operating fund. This is not your edit. This is not your jail lit. This is purely reflects the expenditure rate. And so on the far left there, you'll see that I bolded off the page on 2021. That 58,839 with 14% increase. That was a really strong number. You might say, well, why don't you have 2022? Well, 2021 is the last known year at this point because we think about the spring, April 15th, we just all filed our returns for 22. So they and then people file for extensions. And it takes time for for all the returns to get processed. So we're always dealing with data that's that's pretty far back. But nevertheless, your your collections came in really strong. We were disappointed in the year before at a negative 0.78%. So you are 14.13 down 7.78, and then you were up 10.18 the year before. I I've kind of got tired of trying, I mean, that is, it's wild trying to estimate that number. And so what I've done is really looked at your last 10 years of data on real dollar collections. And I've kind of used that to model out to the future. There's going to be some years that are going to be higher, and there's going to be some years that are going to be lower. So when you're looking at this, I'm using a pretty conservative number for 22 at 3.4%. So what's interesting is that 14% that came in produced a substantial special distribution county wide this year in the amount of 6,308. But if we grow 3.4%, which is a conservative number, that special distribution would go to 10,704,000 the next year. And the reason being is the budget number that you get that you'll get for 24 will be based on what was collected from July 1 of 2022 through June 30, 2023. That will be your budget number. But it's just kind of a raw number that the department revenue says, hey, this is how much we collected during this period. And that's what we're going to give you as a budget. And then they come back and reconcile it on a calendar year. So the budget number you get is a fiscal year number, but then they come back and reconcile it on a calendar year. And so if the balance is more than 15%, then that gets put out in a special distribution, which is the pretty much the pattern we've been in now since they they've been using this this method. So again, for for 2024's number, the increase, I'm only using 3.3% as a budget number. I would say that that should be conservative going into the budget. We might see that number come in stronger. But I've tried to use some conservative numbers for for at this point in time. So with all that said, so your two big revenues are property tax and local option income tax. You have lots of other miscellaneous revenues, and that's why I mentioned earlier, I'll be updating them when we get six months through the year. I've not updated interest income, and I'm anticipating that that's going to be much higher as well. Obviously, interest rates have gone up substantially, not good for borrowing, but it's been good for reinvesting. And suddenly, interest where it wasn't generating near the revenue it used to generate is generating some substantial revenue. And so that will be another favorable variance that will probably be in this next model when we come back in the fall. So so with all that said, page one, the general fund. So the most important line on this page is over here on the left, about three quarters of the way down where it says excess deficit revenues over expenditures. That line shows you how much your budget has been in balance over the last several years. And so most recently, which is new information since the last time I was here. When you look at 2022, at the end of the year, we, at the end of the day, our revenues exceeded expenditures by 1.3 million dollars. And so our cash balance grew from grew to 21,543. We did not have much of an encumbrance this year. And so your budget is in balance this year as of this point for 23 with that higher supplemental distribution by about $588,000. And so if you would, if you were to spend most of the budget this year, not all of it, but the majority of it, that would that would leave you with over $22 million at the end of calendar year 23. Now, one question I get asked is, well, how much cash should we have? How much should we have as an annual cash balance? And my recommendation is is to always end the year with 50% of your next year's property tax collections. And so if you looked at 24, I'm anticipating property tax collections in 24 of about 20,255. And so if you had 10.1 million dollars in cash at the end of a given year, you would avoid any issues of temporary loans in the county in the I don't know, I don't remember the last time we did that, but we have had to do that before where we've had to make temporary loans either from another fund or issue years ago, what's called tax anticipation warrants. We have not had to do that. So you have a very strong cash balance, which is great. Now, when you're looking at those future years, they look really good. But it's because that compounding appeal, where I was anticipating last fall that it'd be around $400,000 a year because of the legislation and your your substantial increase in your assessed valuation of 20%. That number's kicked up substantially. And and so it's creating the creating the surplus there. That is obviously the if there if there's a wild card in the budget right now, that's the wild card in this budget. So and again, it's just a model. It's not necessarily this is not a budget. This is just, this is just some modeling of what we have right now. So this, this is a big fund to the county. This is where you do most of your operations out of. And it's your most sensitive one and your most flexible one in terms of what you can use the money for. So the other funds have many restrictions to them, but this is, this is kind of your pot of gold that you got to manage and always balancing your fixed costs. In other words, your your fixed costs that recur annually out of this fund are always the topic of conversation. Any questions about the general fund before I move on?
Yes, so the commissioners had requested that we increase the the insurance from 10.5 to 11.5. Is that accounted for in this?
I've calculated some in here, but I don't have that. I don't have that actual number in here.
Okay.
So that's something that would show up in the next model. Because what I would be doing is taking what's submitted by the commissioners and all the departments. And I would be building that in here right now. I'm just using a percentage assumption of growth in in health insurance.
Thank you.
Page two, this is a restricted fund, but I just, and we're in good shape in this fund. But I just want you to know, if you go down to that ever most important line to the left, excess deficit revenues over expenditures. You can see that we spent some more, we spent more revenue than we took in last year. Not a big problem. We have a large cash balance here. Right now, our general fund, or excuse me, our reassessment fund is out of balance again for for this year. And so I'm only saying that because we are going through cash. We do have plenty of cash in this fund to do that. But at some point in the future, some of that expense would have to be moved back to the general fund if we kept the same levy. And we could, we could ask for this to be increased, the levy to be increased, but all that money just comes from the general fund. So it doesn't do us a lot of good to have a lot of cash in the reassessment fund. Your most flexible fund is your general fund. So we'd be better off managing the cash down in this fund over time and then moving some expense later. But I just want to want you to note that, that that's something that's that's out of balance. And again, I'm estimating, well, in the year with 1,600,000. And if we had $450,000 cash in here, we'd be, we'd be at that 50% mark. So we're well above even that 50% threshold. Skipping to page five. This is animal control, and Amy just emailed me this week or last week, I guess it was, and said, hey, this one's getting a little close on cash. And as we got close to settlement, we got a little tighter in this fund. So we might need to bump this cash balance up a little bit more in 24. But animal control has its own separate tax rate. But think of it as a department in your general fund because it takes some of the property tax that were allowed and puts it to this fund. So if you said, hey, we want to spend more on animal control, you can do that. But the money that you're going to spend more is coming from the general fund. If you spent less out of this fund, or we go back to the general fund. So there's not a real advantage to carry a large cash balance here either. Now, we want enough in here to cover cash flow. And so that number is closer probably to 550 versus the 382 that we that I anticipate will be at at the end of this year. So we're probably going to have to bump that levy a little bit more in 24, but not a huge amount. Page six. Ringy Day Fund. We put money in this fund in 2019 and 20. We did appropriate some in 22, but we didn't spend it. And we had a $3 million encumbrance. So you call, is that bridges? I have to look it up here or call what that was actually number for. Yeah, okay. So this, that, so if your 6.5 million dollars that you had at the end of 22, you had about $3 million encumbered. So once that's spent, that balance will be at 3.5 million dollars. You can transfer more at any time during the year, more dollars out of the general fund. So if you're going to park some of that surplus in back into the rainy day fund, you could do that. Through 2024, you can transfer up to 15% of your budget. And that's your total budget, not just the general fund, your total budget. So it's a pretty substantial number you could transfer each year. It had been 10% for a long period of time, but they had introduced some legislation a year or two ago that allowed you to increase that 15%. So I guess my point being is if you'd want to reallocate some of the general fund cash balance to build this fund back up, you could easily accomplish that. I have not assumed that. You could do that anytime between now and December 31st. And so, you know, you could go through the whole budget process and decide then whether you want to transfer, park some of that cash in Rainy Day Fund. Page seven. When you look at end of 22, we had expended about $93,000 more than we had taken in. But if you look just to the bottom right of that, you'll see a million 742 that was encumbered. So our cash balance at the end of 22 is a bit misleading when it's showing $5.4 million. About 1.7 million of that was encumbered. So still not a problem. I don't see it as a problem. I just want you to know, don't want you to note that we had quite a bit of cash, but you can see by the end of 23 that spending all the budget this year and the encumbrance, we'd be about 3.7 million dollars of unobligated cash in this fund. Now, this fund doesn't have property tax in it, so you don't have to carry 50% cash balance. This comes in for the most part monthly. It's a little higher in August, September, some specials that you get from the state. So you don't have to have a large cash balance, but same time, you don't have to have 50% of something here. So that's a good, strong cash balance in the highway fund. You can skip page eight. Page nine is local roads and streets. In this case, we had a surplus of $600,000, which looks good. Our cash balance increased, but we'd encumbered about 300,288,000. So I would expect the cash balance to decrease this year to about 2.4% if everything's expended. It doesn't always work out that way. Sometimes it doesn't get built and paid for by the end of the year. Sometimes it, it doesn't get built and paid for by the end of the year, so sometimes it encumbers over. But again, in this case, um, when you look at your annual revenue being about one point five million dollars, a little better than that, you're, you have cash balance of about two point four million unobligated as of the end of, of twenty-three. So, uh, there's, there's a strong cash balance there. Uh, the next page, there's not much to report on this fund. This is a change in the, in the structure of the budget from last year, where we eliminated the cumulative bridge rate. And that may sound strange, but cumulative bridge shared a portion of the maximum levy. And so all we did is eliminate this rate and the levy moved back to the general fund. We didn't lose the money, nor does it mean we don't have the money to spend on bridges, it's just that, um, the, the rate itself was eliminated, expenses were moved. And so this fund had two million five sixty-five, um, at the end of twenty-two. And to my, to my knowledge, that's not obligated at this point, but could be spent with an additional appropriation. So, or budgeted, if he, if, if he so choose to budget it for twenty-four. The next page, page eleven is the health fund. And this is much like, this, this fund's much like the animal control. Think of this as a department in your general fund, because it takes a portion of that maximum levy as well. So again, raise this levy up, it comes from the general fund, decrease this levy, it goes back to the general fund. Now, this has gotten, uh, some reimbursements in there that has built this cash up, uh, quite a bit. And, uh, we ended the year with a million two oh eight. I would anticipate by the end of this year, if we spent one hundred percent of the budget, we'd be at a million one thirty-nine. And you probably realistically only need about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars here. So this one would not be one that we would need to necessarily, uh, increase the levy for cash flow like animal control, we might do the opposite. If the cash is not necessary, you could decrease the levy and move that cash back to the general fund if you wanted to. So it's just a push and pull there. Not saying you, that's your choice, I'm just saying you, but you have that option. And we actually did that, uh, it's been a few years ago now, we actually, we've done that before, so. Page thirteen. The cumulative capital development fund. Uh, this is a rate-driven fund. And it's not part of your maximum levy. So in other words, this doesn't compete with your general fund dollars, this is a separate rate, um, that you collect. And when you're looking at the revenue of twenty-two, um, two million eight thirty-one, we saw a substantial increase to three point four million dollars this year in that levy. And the reason being is your assessed value increased twenty percent. So if you're collecting point zero three 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 and your assessed valuation goes up twenty percent, you're gonna collect twenty percent more in property tax in this fund. And so, um, it, it did receive, uh, this fund received a pretty substantial benefit last year with that higher assessed valuation. And will again this next year, depending on what the assessed valuation finally sorts out too. So now we did gain a little bit of cash, not a lot, but we encumbered about five hundred thousand. So had that been paid, our cash balance would have been a little bit lower. But so even beyond everything that's appropriated to date, we'd have about four point seven million dollars in the CCD fund at the end of twenty-three. Again, a very strong, strong cash balance for the CCD fund. Before we, okay, page fifteen. This is your general obligation bond fund. Uh, you've been issuing short-term bonds every year to manage the tax rate. And so that's how I've built this fund again, and that's the decision you're going to have to make, is do you want to manage to a flat tax rate again for twenty-four? Keep in mind, um, how I've built this is the assumption if we get the appeal, okay? So if everything plays out that we qualify for that appeal and we get the full appeal, and you wanted to, and you wanted to collect, or excuse me, wanted to keep the tax rate flat, if our assessed valuation grows at thirteen percent, that might be a little aggressive, that might be aggressive. We'll know that assessed valuation, August one, or close to August one. And so we should know that answer before you get to budget time. But the commissioners I know would, would want some direction on what you're thinking on the tax rate, because it impacts how much bond, how much of a bond you would issue. So, um, if you said, hey, we don't want to collect the, the same tax rate, we want to lower that, that would impact how much we could issue for the short-term bond. So I can run different models for you too, if you so choose to do that. I mean, I've got the structure set up, doesn't take long to do. But hypothetically, if everything played out like I suggested today, uh, you would, you would have about an eight point two million dollar opportunity to issue a bond and keep that tax rate flat. That's pretty substantial, but the reason it's got so substantial is because last year's AV grew twenty percent. This year's are gonna grow again, pretty, pretty good clip, so, uh, it's producing a lot with, uh, with keeping the same tax rate. So if we don't issue any debt, the tax rate would decrease substantially. And I don't know that you'd want that to happen for it to decrease, because it seems like if you'd want to, if you wanted to decrease, do it a little bit over time. And, you know, we've, we've, over the years, managed that tax rate pretty well, trying to keep to the same tax rate at least each year. I'll show you that, I'll show you that, I'm gonna end with tax rates. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what kind of a, a bond. Now, again, I could run five percent in here and tell you how much that would be, uh, as well.
So just a question from a functional literate here. The general obligation bond, if we bonded against the lit, and use that revenue coming in to pay for a bond payment for that, would that also affect the tax rate?
Yeah, this is, this is being, uh, this is a property tax-backed debt. Okay, but if you decided you wanted to issue a bond and back it up a lit, it wouldn't allow for property tax and your tax rate would fall. And so that, what I'm referring to is a property tax back G O bond.
Okay.
So, and again, you don't, I'm not saying you have to do the full eight point two million, that's just to give you some idea how much you would generate based on thirteen percent growth in AV. But I could run it again, like I said, at five percent, if you want to see how much five percent tax rate with the assumption that we'd get the appeal. The question mark is that appeal, right? I mean, is that, if, if we don't qualify for that appeal, say we only qualified four hundred thousand versus the million six, there'd be another million two there that you could issue in bonds and not affect the tax rate. That makes sense? So, so it would be higher than this. This bond would be higher than this if I didn't have that million six in for the appeal. So, they all kinda links together. Uh, this last year for twenty-three, we issued seven point four billion. Give you some benchmark of what that was this last year. Page eighteen. This is the jail lit rate. And, um, set it point two percent. And I folded off the page, because we're now in sight of that bond are paying off, the jail bond paying off. So I folded it off the page here. Uh, you could see that we have payments about five point five this year, another five point five in twenty-four. And then it goes down to a half payment left in twenty-five. And then it's paid off in twenty-six. So right now, we have a structural deficit. In other words, what we put into this fund to spend with operating costs and the bond payment, we're spending about one point seven million dollars more than we're taking in this year. So our cash balance will drop to about fourteen million dollars in this fund. And would, would, if you have similar operating expenses in this fund for twenty-four, you would spend about seven hundred thousand dollars more than you're taking in. And then in twenty-five, it goes positive because you only have a half payment due that year. And so, um, that's, it's, it's twenty-five when you start to see surplus. Now, you have cash, in other words, you could appropriate a substantial amount of cash out of here for a project if you so choose to do so. So you have cash balance and you have, uh, potential for another bond if you needed to. That could be built back in here, kind of depends on the amount, right? I don't have anything like that go in this. But, um, if, if you were to do a project, you could appropriate a chunk of this money and put this, this cash down and then finance the rest of it. So, but where you'd want the payment to start coming on, you'd want the payment to start coming on twenty-five or twenty-six.
So the payment comes off the twenty-five, January one of twenty-five. That's the last, as I know.
And it's either January one or June thirtieth, I'd have to look, I, I, I'd have to. But do we pay him the day before?
That's a, that's a interesting question, because the, when they did the original estimate, you know, that, that first blush of it, it shows it being January one. I think that'd be relatively important to know, because we're gonna continue to receive monthly revenue. But that's.
I believe that's right, it's January fifteenth of twenty-five, that we, January fifteenth. We have one more payment. So that's what you see here is a January payment.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, this is kind of an important, important fund for you. This obviously assumes you're gonna continue with the point two percent. Page nineteen is the E nine one one fund. And this is a fund to keep your eye on. Uh, we are spending more than we're receiving in this fund at this point. And so, um, last year, we, we spent about two hundred and five thousand dollars more than we took in. This year, based on what has been budgeted to date, uh, we're, we're, uh, out of balance about two hundred and ninety-four thousand. And it grows, your, your, your amount that you get from the state's the same, but your expenses would go up with cost of living. So that's why that deficit's going, so this is kind of like the reassessment fund. You've got cash in here, you got plenty of cash to ride this out, but you can see it's a little shorter window, at some point we're gonna have to move, we're gonna have to do something with these expenses into, into balance in the future. So not, not a huge amount, but something to keep your eye on, that we would, we have to do something here at some point.
So do you, would you suggest doing an additional appropriation to bring this?
So that, that, um, but the only way you're gonna be able to balance this is to take some of this expense and move it to another fund. And that either being your edit fund or your general fund. And that would be up to you, how you would, which one you would do that. So this is just a fund, we, we've got plenty of cash. At the end of this year, even spending three hundred thousand more, we're taking in, we'd still have a million dollars, so we have some time. This is not, this is not something you have to deal with right away, it's just something to keep your eye on. Page twenty, um, is the edit fund, the new edit fund, this is point two percent. It generates, um, about four point four million dollars in twenty-three, and we've appropriated that. So, um, uh, that's, uh, something new this year. So we don't obviously have any cash balance of prior years there.
For road, for road projects, would this be another, uh, opportunity to bond and then?
You could bond against this, yes. Yeah. You could do revenue bonds for road projects and use this, and could use that revenue, yeah.
Given, given the amount of roads that we've got that are huge.
It doesn't take long, does it?
Massive.
Yeah.
And so I think that if we, and this is, I think, to be agreed upon by commissioners and the will of the council, how we do this going forward, but.
Yeah, this would be what would be considered a revenue bond, you're pledging edit tax for that payment. And versus the other bond I was talking about, this property tax backbone, and you're using property tax to repay it. Page twenty-one. Yeah, I'm just about done. Page twenty-one is the food and beverage fund. It's a separate fund, but kind of think of this one as, as your general fund. When this was created years ago, um, we moved expenses out of the general fund to this fund. If you want to see what's being paid out of there, there's a section in the back that shows everything you pay out of the general fund. There's a section that shows everything paid out through the beverage. So you can see what departments are paid from where, it's in the back of this document. But, um, we, um, surplus eight hundred thousand dollars last year in this fund. And so, uh, this, this too is a monthly revenue, pre-stable monthly revenue that you get, so you don't have to have a large sum of cash. And there've been a couple of points in time where we've used this fund for insurance purposes, and you can see that, that we did that this year. We have nine hundred thousand dollars for group insurance in here. But you can go back to twenty where we spent some out of here for group insurance, and in eighteen, we spent some out of here for group insurance. So those are two years where we did that. So right now, I would say the revenue, I'm, I'm hopeful that when I get the first six months collections, that I'm gonna pump this up, that, that it came in higher, because when you look at actual two thousand twenty-two, you collected three point six million dollars. And when I estimated this last summer, uh, it was three point three million. So, um, I'm hopeful that that will be come in stronger yet, uh, this year. But right now, we're out of balance eight sixty-six, but it's because that nine hundred thousand dollar insurance payment that we appropriated into the budget for twenty-three. I don't show that for twenty-four, you know, that, that that would happen this year and that that expense would have to go back somewhere else. Um, so even with that, uh, you still have one point seven million dollars in this fund, that's fifty percent of your annual revenue. That's more than sufficient in this fund. So I think that's why over time, you know, we've kind of chose this fund to kind of buy that cash down with, using, paying for some of those health insurance payments to, to use some of that cash, because, yeah, just think of this fund, even if it's a separate, how we have to account for it, it's, it's, uh, similar to the general fund revenue. And when you, when you go to the next page, page twenty-two, um, this is a page, it's not a fund. I've combined your general fund, your edit fund, your food and beverage together to kind of show you that, of course, our general fund is in balance by about six hundred thousand. And our, our, um, food and beverage is out of balance by about three hundred thousand. So when you look at that combined, uh, we're out of balance by two seventy-seven this year. But that's pretty small in comparison, you know, then at the ending cash balance of twenty-three, it'd be about twenty-three, almost twenty-four million dollars, um, combination of those three funds. Now, the edit fund, there's no cash balance in there, because it's new, it's a revenue and we've appropriated the expense. So, uh, it's, what you're really seeing here is more the food and beverage and the general fund combined. Finally, page twenty-three. Tax rates. So if you go all the way back to two thousand eighteen, and you look at the county tax rate, it was point three one two three. And for the most part, has remained relatively flat at the end of twenty-three. It was point three zero zero two. It dropped, uh, slightly, we didn't, we didn't issue quite enough bond to get the full flat tax rate, we got awful close. So point zero zero one zero, so that's really close considering the appeal and everything. So if you went with a no tax rate increase, if you look at the general fund, interesting enough, the rate actually wouldn't even increase on the general fund with the appeal if we grew thirteen percent, because your levy's going up twelve percent, and if your AV goes up thirteen percent, they offset each other. So what you really then see is, is managing that same bond rate, which is the second fund from the bottom there, at point zero six. At point zero, six, three, one. And managing that to point zero, six, five, one, the next year. Or ultimately then a no rate increase for twenty-four. So, if you were to say, hey, we wanna decrease the tax rate, I would not recommend you decrease the general fund rate. I would recommend you decrease the bond rate, and the reason being, the general fund levy. Is part of the calculation for how much lit you get from, from the county pool. Lit, local option income taxes collected countywide. And then it's allocated to all the units based on the prior year property tax levy and the prior year distribution. Well, property tax doesn't include new debt. And so you'd wanna keep the funds higher, that you're gonna get the calculation from lit back to the county unit. And decrease the debt, cause the debt doesn't get included in that calculation. So, if that makes sense, it's a bit confusing, so again, let's repeat that. County option or local option income taxes collected countywide, they have a pool of money. And it's distributed back out to the local entities based on the prior year property tax levy, less debt. Plus the prior year distribution. And so, it's the debt one that you'd wanna decrease if you were deciding to decrease your rate. So it's all. It's like a Rubik's cube. Intertwined together, it's a lot of separate funds, but, uh, they all play against each other. You wanna play the ones that get you the most money back from the lit pool. So, again, um, this is just kind of a snapshot of things to come, it looks really good right now, you know, I don't know how your department heads are gonna turn their budgets in. But things look really pretty good. We've got a couple wild cards out there that I gotta, we've gotta address yet. And again, I'll be updating, uh, this model based on what happens through June thirtieth, and then ultimately what we. Get certified to collect all year, and then the decision you all have to make as a county is, uh, how much debt do you want to incur to manage that Gio bond? But you could wait and actually. Wait and issue it after, go through the approvals for a higher amount. And then when we get the assessed valuation, we can dial it in to how much we wanna issue. The one problem that we would have is not knowing the appeal, and, and let me walk you through the timeline of that. We have to file the appeal before October nineteenth. Okay, so we have to file that appeal. We probably won't know that appeal result until. Probably late November, probably most likely December. And so that's really pushing the window then to issue that bond, so. It, you know, I guess if. If we wanted to try and, if we didn't get all the appeal, would you wanna keep it in a, catch it in a bond? Cause you could, you know, say we took a million dollars off that appeal, you could then catch it on the other side with a, with a Gio bond if you wanted to. But we'd have to wait and issue the Gio bond after we get the word on the appeal, so it'd be a. Tight window, although done, it, it, many units of government issue bonds in December. We've not done that, we've issued sooner than that, but, but that does happen, if you wanted to try and hold on to it, it's all, can't see how that appeal plays out. So a little, little different this year going. Maybe we'll know more about the appeal before we go into that, feel a little more comfortable, knowing what we're gonna get, but right now. We don't know that, so. There's a lot of information there, I'd be happy to answer. Happy to answer any questions you might have, I, this is.
Could you go over a couple of the assumptions you've got in the back?
Sure, which, which ones do you like to talk about?
All of them.
All of them?
In five minutes.
Okay. Well, those, all, ultimately, though, all those assumptions are, are linked either to a revenue estimate or to an expenditure estimate. Not saying that's how it's gonna work, again, this is a model, not a forecast per se, it's to take certain assumptions, kinda just play them out. But yeah, if you were, uh, if you were looking at like, well, what, what everything that's tied to this. For example, uh, page, I guess it's at eighty-five or eighty-six.
Eighty-six, yes.
Page eighty-six. I was talking about the expenditure side of things. Uh, this is an example that I have three percent built in there on raises. You may decide something more than that, I used, um, three percent on the retirement. But you can see I used ten percent, Jonathan, you had mentioned health insurance before, like, do I have the commissioner's request, I don't, I, I'm using. What we've appropriated this year times ten percent more. As an assumption. Then you get into supplies, other services and charges and capital, I, I've used five percent there, cause those have been. Higher than, you know, the cost of living on those have been higher. So, uh, those assumptions essentially, whatever's been appropriated to date, I take those percentages and apply them out and compound them. See true tax value, you see the percentage is here, you can see I used thirteen percent, and then, and then lowered that in those next two years to four and a half percent. So, how long, you know. Here, um, you know, what, what will next January look like on assessments? From what I understand, you know, the reason we're seeing such a big bump again for twenty-four is. The assessment for twenty-four is going to reflect what happened from January one twenty-two to January one twenty-three, and if you think about the spring of twenty-two. The real estate market was still on fire, and for the most part, what I can tell is values aren't decreasing, they, transactions might be slowing down. Uh, but interest rates have had, obviously slowed things down in the fall, but everything that happened in the spring. Is now getting reflected in the January one twenty-three assessment or payable twenty-four. Fair enough? Yeah, so that's just what I've been seeing in, in accounting, so. So, um, I was a little bit concerned about the circuit breaker, um, so that next assumption down there reflects. So when we, when we, we, we get to budget, based on what the DLGF tells us we could collect. But then we make assumptions of how much we're not gonna collect based on the circuit breaker, cause we're not gonna collect one hundred percent. So, uh, in your case, for the county, you lose twelve, you're gonna lose twelve point four, four percent. Uh, this year to the circuit breaker. Of what we budgeted and what we anticipate, you're gonna lose that much, so you're losing twelve point four cents on the dollar, so for every dollar that we try to collect, we only collect. You know, a portion of it, minus the twelve point four four. And so I'm using that same assumption in the future, if my, if our property taxes go up, I'm assuming we're gonna continue to lose twelve point four, four percent. Future, so. Uh, that's just kinda the first page, there's lots of other assumptions in there, but that gives you a feel for how I've modeled it.
Is any questions for Mike? I know we have several, but we're getting short on time.
Yeah.
But we wanna thank you very much.
My pleasure.
For your wisdom.
I'll be back.
He'll be back.
I'll be back.
Come back early and often.
Will be, I'll be back, and it'll be, it'll be dialed in at that point, well.
All right, we wanna take five minutes before we start the other meeting. Give everybody a chance. So we'll adjourn meeting, and then we'll come back in five minutes and start the.